Okay, so good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 12, 2021. The time is 11:02 a.m. This is our weekly Commissioner's Status Update. Attending in person Commissioners Duncan and Philios, joining us by phone Commissioner Bill Brooks. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Moving on. First of our items, Lombard, LCA, Conrep, LCA Architects, I'm sorry, building costs and potential action item. Leslie and I guess Sean as well. Go right ahead.
Yeah, so since we do have thousands of dollars of deputies in front of me, we need to keep this to hopefully 20 to 30 minutes, if that's okay, Ken. And I'll let Sean do some introductions.
Okay, so good morning, everyone. The purpose of this meeting, I think, is to be twofold. The first one is the board-
Can you lower your middle thing? There you go.
I don't know how to turn it down, but I'll move it away. Is that better?
That's fine.
I don't know how to turn it down. There. How's that?
Yeah.
Is that better?
I think Nance is trying to-
Yeah, go ahead.
There's a little device on the-
That's better? Okay. So, anyway, the purpose is twofold. I could try the podium mic.
Don't you have the little slide on the mic? I think if you, yeah, slide that down. Okay. There you go. Try that.
Sorry.
Try it now.
How's that?
Still a bit-
Still loud.
That's okay. Go ahead. As long as we don't get the echo.
Yeah, the feedback, the echo's the problem. The first thing is that the board needs to decide how much money do you want to spend? That will be the driver for the number of square feet. The second thing that needs to be decided, and if they don't get done today, maybe we get it done next week, is who's going into the building. So, when we did this study, we did it the same, I think, with Architects West, where we said, "Tell us what you need out 15 to 20 years." So, we said 2040. And there was a lot of stuff that came back that I think was realistic. There's a lot of stuff that came back that's not realistic. And so, we have been working, LCA and myself and Corey, on trying to scale some things down. It's not realistic to have conference rooms that hold 60 to 80 people and they only get used once in a while, once a month. It's not realistic to have, and it's a waste of taxpayers' dollars, to have the largest courtroom in the state of Idaho, and it doesn't get used all the time. So, there were some, it's unrealistic to say, "Well, whatever they get, that's what I want." Because in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, and granted, that's what I get paid for, but this is probably the most important financial decision that the county has ever had to make. It's twice almost what the jail expansion was and three times what KEC was, and it sets up the tone for the next five to 10 years. Now, it's very possible, and I'll let Ken go through it, that, you know, you're only going to get what you can budget to, and you may have to build in four or five years a second building. But it's a waste of money to build, the taxpayers' dollars, to build a building that will last until 2040, and it's only half occupied for 10 years. So, we need to build to what you have a budget for. It's no different than when we did the jail. This is our budget. This is what we're going to offer the CMGC. This is what we're going to build to, and there'll have to be some sacrifices made. And with that, I'll just turn it over to Ken.
Okay. Before we do that, do you have any thoughts before we turn it over?
No, I just want to hear Ken's presentation.
Oh, okay. And I'm going to pause just for a moment. I'm not going to make any decision unless we incorporate who's moving to KEC. I'm going to make that very plain. From my perspective, we just purchased a building that has close to 60,000 square feet. We have to make an assumption as to who's moving in there. It may not be cast in concrete, but I'm going to throw three out right now. If you want to flip out, flip out, but here we go. Elections, community development, and the assessor. There's 130 people right there. That building currently houses about 100, and maybe could house more, I don't know. But we're talking 56,000 square feet. We cannot go forward with this if we don't consider what we're going to do with that, because we could potentially build more than we need and then find out, "Oh, my God, what do we do with this 4.7 million bucks we just spent that's buying us a hell of a lot more than the $20 million that's going to buy us, potentially?" So, we need, we have to take a holistic approach. We have to look at the totality. If elections goes in there, now we've got a building. Now that we've got something that potentially we can sell, and we can make other adjustments. But, okay, maybe it's not those three groups. Maybe it's other groups. I don't know. But that has to also be considered for planning purposes. Go right ahead.
The three that you listed are-
I'd like to, I'd like to comment too, Chris.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill, by all means. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I heard, first, we're going to figure out how much money we're going to spend. Then we've got to figure out who's going to go where. I think that's exactly backwards. And I'm not prepared to spend any money until I know who's going where, and I agree completely with what you just said, Chris, that we've got a big chunk of space that we need to figure out how we're going to occupy it and then move from there.
Right. So, I, that's a perfect segue. Thanks, Bill. So, for me-
Go ahead.
Examining what we need, public defender's out of space, they're not going to go to KEC.
Right.
AMP, you know, needs to be by the holding cells, so they're not going out neither. We're not putting a courtroom out at KEC, and we're not putting the prosecuting attorney out at KEC. So, while they're very intertwined, they're a little bit separate. So, we may not need to build as big a building because we have KEC, but none of the people who are out of space can go to KEC.
Yeah, public defender and prosecutor, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. So, so for me, you know, I appreciate that, but then, you know, if assessor does move, I mean, they have some co-joined operations, so I'm not sure if that would work. But let's say it did, then, you know, are you going to put the prosecutor there? I mean, what, so for me, it's kind of two separate issues that are intertwined, but the major issue is public defender and courtrooms. That's number one and two. Then, public defender three, I mean prosecutor three and AMP four. So, even all the moving that's going to happen with KEC isn't going to affect those. We're not putting a courtroom in this building. So, it's, I still want to build to what is going to make us happy today, and with technology increasing, and we don't know if, what is going to happen in the future, if more court is going to happen over electronics or what that deal is. So, yes, Chris, we do have to consider KEC, but it doesn't really alleviate anything that we need for the new building.
Right, right. Not for the groups that you mentioned, but it does also free up space and potential sale. Now, if we have the potential sale of buildings, now that makes it easier to finance this one going forward. But go ahead. I don't, I don't want to take any of LCA, any more of LCA's time. Good thoughts. Thank you, Leslie and Bill. Go ahead. Who, is Ken up?
Yep.
Ken, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay. I think Sean sent you-
Yes.
Our build-out options summary.
Yep.
Options one through four. You have that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. What we did, a little history, we met with the users groups that were, that we were told were going into this building, and did some, you know, needs analysis of the spaces that they would like and their projections for the 2040. From that, we came up with a square foot size of a building. You see those results in option one. It was apparent by going through this that the needs for the 2040, space needs for the 2040 are going to out, out, you know, are higher than the budget's going to allow for the building's size.
Sure.
So, you see, so we knew we had to come up with a couple of different options to bring this building down to a manageable budget of what we were told before that it would need, which means reducing square footage, obviously. In the breakouts that we had, we broke out each individual space needs to their square foot cost, so that we would be able to kind of massage some things around and come up with these options. So, option number one, you see here, is the straight 2040 space requests from all of the departments. All of the departments came into the building, and they're fully TI built out. And you can see I broke it out to what the shell and the TI cost is, the non-construction soft costs, the FF and E costs, and to a total project cost is kind of the all-in number.
Excuse me, Ken. Does everyone have a copy of this?
Yes.
No? Okay.
Well, Bill, Bill will have a copy of it.
Bill does. Okay. Ken, just for the-
Yes, I have a copy of it.
Okay, just for the benefit of everyone in the room, if you wouldn't mind mentioning, Ken, the square footage and the price, just so that at least everyone has some perspective.
Option one, the full 2040 space requests, the square feet is 82,095 square feet, for a total estimated project cost about $31,124,592. Now, we started looking at those areas to say, "Okay, well, how can we reduce square footage?"
Ken, can I, Ken?
Yes.
Could you mention, just for everybody's benefit, the departments that, that, when you say all departments in the building, this is Russ, by the way, can you just go through those again, so everybody is reminded about what departments we're talking about going into the building?
Yes. The departments that we were told were going to go into the building would be courts, right, which includes a couple of courtrooms, judges' offices, the prosecutor's office, public defender's office, adult misdemeanor probation, county commissioners' offices, some underground covered parking for, you know, secure judges' parking, and some underground ADA, as well as central holding. The other spaces in the buildings are the entry functions, you know, the security area in the front, you know, bailiff, building support, which would be, you know, square footage for stairs and elevators and hallways, that sort of thing.
Okay, keep going. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Option two, in looking at reducing the square footage, we thought, okay, so if we can't build out the 2040 square foot, let's reduce those numbers a little bit and give a little bit of room for each of the departments to grow. That's what I call the intermediate growth square footages. Same thing, option two, all departments are in the building, full TI buildout, reducing those square footages down to 69,624 square feet. That resulting cost came down to $26,467,689. Now, we knew that didn't quite meet as well, so we came up option three A, intermediate square footages again, and we shelled some space, meaning, you know, there's no walls, it's just an open floor plate for a tenant improvement to take place later. We took out the adult misdemeanor probation and the county commissioner's square footage to just be shelled space for a future TI. So, those costs came out, and we also took the large courtroom as a future TI as well. So, that took the square footage to 65,358, to a total project cost of $23,45,832. We kept going with those options to further reduce. Option three B, same thing as three A, right, intermediate square footages, misdemeanor probation, and county commissioners are shelled for a future TI project once those funds are, may become available. Same with that large courtroom. And we take out the two largest square footage departments of the building, the prosecutor and the public defender. We shell those space for future TI as well, when funds may become available.
So, Ken?
Square footage, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt here, but that looks like everybody, so it looks like a shelled building.
Pretty close. The courtrooms are still there. There's two medium courtrooms and all of the support spaces.
Right.
Okay.
So, I think, will that bring, yeah. Each of the, on the breakout sheets, the prosecutor and the public defender, each of their TI space build-out cost is just over $2 million each.
Gotcha.
So, we thought, okay, if we need to bring the cost down, let's, let's see what it looks like if we shell out most of the space. Would you see that bring, bring the cost down to $17,739,386? We came, another option, four A, the intermediate square footages. And then we said, okay, if we cut occupants out of the building, misdemeanor probation and county commissioners, let's say they do not go in this building, they stay where they currently are. That way, we don't have to take their square footage or TI costs or anything, they just stay where they are. That brought the building down to 54,898. We also still shelled the large courtroom for a future TI, and we limited the prosecutor and the public defender's space needs to 11,000 square feet. What that did is allows them to each take their own floor and fit on the floor plate of the building on the site. So, in this four A, prosecutor and public defender, those spaces are built out. That reduced the building's square feet, like I said, and that total project cost came down to $20,866,585. Take it a step further, option four B, intermediate growth square footage, again, misdemeanor probation and county commissioners are not in this building, future TI for the large courtroom, prosecutor and public defender, we limit to 11,000 square feet. But this one includes the public defender shelled space for a future TI. And we took away the covered parking in the basement, would not be in the building, to get our square foot to 49,906 square feet for a total project cost $16,988,210.
Ken, this is Chris. I have a question. Option four A, prosecutor and public defender limited to 11,000 square feet, I take it that's 11,000 between the two groups?
Each.
Or is that each?
No, each of that has 11,000 square feet.
Oh, each?
Correct. Yeah.
Just want to make sure. Okay.
They're, for reference, their 2040 square feet needs are around 12,000 square feet, 12,000 to 13,000 square feet.
Okay.
And Ken, for reference, for reference also, can you let them know what their current square footage is for both prosecutor and public defenders?
Sure.
I know we have that somewhere.
Yes. Give me just a second. I've got the prosecutor current square footage around 9,600 square feet, and the public defender around 10,700 square feet. So, we would be adding about, about 2,000 square feet to their current-
Total.
...space.
Yep, okay. All right.
Hi, this is Carleen. I was wondering, could you just repeat the option three A information again?
Sure. Three A was our immediate growth square footages. Adult misdemeanor probation and county commissioners' space is shelled for a future TI, and the large courtroom is a future TI. That square feet was 65,358, and the total project cost around $23,45,832.
Yeah. Carleen, this is Chris. I'll send you that, that summary sheet. I'll do it right now.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Questions for Ken?
I have another question, if I can just ask before I forget.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So, you're saying that the large, the large courtroom, large courtroom would be shelled in certain circumstances. How many other courtrooms are left, then?
That would leave two medium courtrooms-
Two.
-being built out.
Right.
And those courtrooms are about 1,700 square feet each, and they would fit around, those would be full jury courtrooms with a gallery of around 60 seats.
Okay. Thank you.
What option was, uh?
All the, all the options are two medium courtrooms with 60 seats each.
Okay. Sean, what roughly, what's the square, just to put it in perspective, what's the square footage of this building, roughly?
44,000 and some change.
Okay. So, every option here, I'm just trying to keep it in perspective, is larger. Okay. Bill, do you have any thoughts?
I don't at this point.
Okay, so the question is, where do we go from here? Leslie, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I think with the CMGC, I'm hoping that option three B, if we take out the large courtroom and we either make the two mediums smaller and then do a larger one, so maybe two, well, I don't want to get into the weeds right now, but I think-
No, go ahead.
...we can adjust the courtrooms on option three B, and then allow maybe the prosecutor and public defender to be improved. So, I guess, Ken, what I need to know is, we have to have space for all the people. Shelling out some of these people who we need, you know, BOCC probably is the only one that could be shelled out, but if BOCC does not move, HR doesn't move, IT doesn't move, and so there's a whole bunch of things that are hinging on the BOCC moving. But for me, I'm kind of looking at it, an $18 million project in my mind, and then hopefully be able to make some adjustments where we can get this done for that kind of price tag.
Leslie, when you say BOCC, that includes not just our staff?
It's only, it's only the eight of us.
Oh, it's only the eight of us?
Yeah.
Okay, because I thought where you were going with this was that it was IT as well. Okay.
No, no, no. Just if the eight of us move, then HR has room and IT will have room with Civil moving to the prosecutor.
Okay, understood.
So, you know, this is, like Sean said, a really big deal, and it's not easily solved. There's a bunch of different ways we can do this, so it's just going to take some time, and I think if we're all just patient, we'll, we're going to get a really good product out of it. But right now, I'm thinking that, and maybe Steve needs to, Treasurer Matheson needs to chime in here, about the $18 million-
See, there he is.
...project. That's just kind of where I'm at.
I was ready to say, "We need Steve," before we can go any further. They noticed you here. I don't know what, come on up, Steve. Steve, either you or Deena, URD closures, what's coming in roughly this year? Is it in the three to three and a half million dollar range?
I think you'd have to tell me what's going to happen with the legislature first.
Exactly.
I don't know that they're going to, they're not going to be dipping into that, or are they planning to?
Well, if they do a 5% cap, if they do a 5% cap, then that absolutely limits what happens, because if a URD comes back-
That'll be a total cap.
Yes, total cap. Exactly.
And I've heard 4% too, so I don't know if it's either one.
Well, that's just even bleaker. Thanks. So, for me, I think going down the road of the 18 million, and we've already had the discussion that until April, we can't really make any hard-line commitments. You know, going through, we've already agreed to pay LCA for phase one, and then getting to the point where we know what the legislature has done, then that will allow us to make better decisions. But for me, 18 million, I don't want to go over that.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the different, options three A and three B are actually the same square footage, which is interesting.
Right. It's just what was shelled and-
What was shelled and-
Yeah.
What isn't. Right.
Yeah, three, three A includes the prosecutor and public defender's build-out space.
Which we have to have the public defender.
Shell space, yeah.
Right, okay.
And Sean had mentioned that moving that public defender and doing their TI in this project frees up money, you know, move money from their, them paying rent at their current location, you know, in the long run helps fund their space in the new building.
Right.
Okay. So, Steve, this is Treasurer Matheson, for anybody looking in, or listening in, rather. We can make assumptions as to what the legislature's going to do or not going to do, but in broad terms, can you give us at least a broad sweep of what the financing options might look like?
They're pretty broad, and as we spoke the last time, making the assumption that there's no changes legislatively this year.
Yeah, let's do that so that we can at least put a stake in the ground to make it easier. Okay.
And then the other assumption that you're going to have to define for me is going to be, what is the appetite of the commissioners regarding forgone balances? If the answer is zero, I'll need to know that.
Okay.
I think zero for me at this point, because if we have the option to borrow half, and it takes, you know, three years to do this, then I'd rather look into that rather than hitting the forgone.
You know, let's not go into the forgone at this time. I'm open, but, but to me, that's an absolute last resort, and that, and I would only consider it if in fact the legislature puts a stranglehold on us.
Okay.
And I don't know that they'll do that. I think when they emerge from this session, I think it's not going to be quite as onerous as we think right now, but let's go ahead, assuming no changes, Steve. Go ahead. Bill, you didn't weigh in here. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm listening. I'm very interested in what Steve has to say. I, I feel at this point in time, until we know what the legislature's going to do, it's premature to make any, any long-term commitments.
Well, I can definitely make the long-term commitment, is I'm not going for 31 million.
I think you have consensus there.
Yeah.
Okay. So, let, just, just to give, give us all a flavor, Steve, go ahead and assume no changes, current tax structure.
And then from a financing standpoint, and how we're going to pay for this, are you guys willing to do what is called lease appropriation type of arrangement? We've talked about that in the past. And for those of you in the room and on the line, it effectively is going to encumber the property, and if the appropriations do not take place in the years forward, because of a new- And if the appropriations do not take place in the years forward, because a new board decides not to appropriate the actual lease payment, then we forfeit the rights of that property.
Which would be the building only, not the dirt?
No, it would be the dirt too.
Okay. So that's a different structure that I'm familiar with.
Yes, because any of these, on these lease appropriations, where all the structures that I'm aware of, any investor or any bank or any provider of the funds, in order to go ahead and advance those funds for the building to be made, is going to need claim to that asset.
Right, to the building.
To the building, which includes the dirt.
Which includes the dirt.
Okay.
The actual process is that at initiation, the county is transferring over the dirt to the investors. And then at the expiry of the actual transaction, it's transferred back to the county. But during that timeframe, they need to be protected, because you can't just pick up the building and move it somewhere. So they have to have the dirt. So if the county is, or the BOCC is willing to do that type of structure, I don't see why we couldn't afford any of these alternatives that are on the table.
Okay.
But potentially, there are less risky and less costly options.
I'll let you define risky, but from a cost standpoint, you have the option, and I think everybody understands this, to do a voter-approved bond issuance.
So that would be the second option, if you will.
Which theoretically is going to be cheaper from a financing standpoint or the cost of the money, but in the great scheme of things, the difference between that, that structure and a lease appropriation is de minimis. Yes, it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars more expensive, but.
On a $20 million project, then that's not much.
On a $20 million project, over five years, 10 years, 20 years, it's not, I don't believe a factor. It's more of a political decision that has to be made, which structure do you want to go? And I believe I've heard the commissioners state in the past that it's probably not a viable voter-approved bond route.
Right.
At least that's what I think I've heard you guys say before. So that leaves us with the lease appropriation structure, which then transfers over to the investors, the property itself. And I'm assuming that you want to finance this over 10, 15, 20 years.
Okay. That's fine.
And then we've also spoken briefly about borrowing money from our enterprise fund.
Uh huh.
Let's call it nine or 10 million dollars. We still need a cash flow stream to pay that back, but at the $17 million mark, borrowing money from the enterprise fund, diminishing some of our cash reserves for operating, you know, two or three-month operating expenditures, it's all doable. But I guess I'm pushing the question back to you guys. It seems like we're going down the lease appropriation route and/or possibly.
The enterprise fund.
Borrowing from the enterprise fund.
Yeah. When we had the last discussion, we had 11.9 million in assigned fund balance. So that's, you know, so about 12 million in assigned fund balance, so we wouldn't have to touch our cash reserves. And then that plus the enterprise fund is going to get us really close.
Yes. At the smaller end of this.
Correct. Well, I'm only looking at the smaller end, because I think right now, things are too much up in the air with the future of everything. Is, you know, most everything is going to happen online now. If that's the case, then why would we build a huge building when people are going to be working from home? So that's where I'm at.
If in fact that becomes long-term.
Right.
The working from home. And it depends how, the experience that employers have with that arrangement. It could be good, it could be bad. If it's good, then there's going to be less demand, obviously, for commercial space. So let's see what happens.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, that helps. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Steve. Okay, then. So I think that kind of ends our discussion for today.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you, if either one of you are ready to say, you know, 18 million's the number, or you want to put it off, but I'm not prepared to go over 18 million.
But see, this comes back again to what you mentioned earlier, which is what is the legislature going to do? Because if it turns out that what they do is favorable, let's just say that for whatever that means, and given the URD dollars that are coming back, which I want to say is in the vicinity of three to three and a half million, maybe we can go a little bit better and do what needs to be done so that we're not revisiting this again later in three to five years. But we don't know that today. That's the problem.
Yep.
So if today we decide, okay, we're not going over 18 mil, but then we decide that to do it right, really neat, it's going to take us to 21 or 22 and have the ability to manage it, are we locking ourselves in?
I still don't think, even if the legislature is favorable, I still don't think spending the extra money is going to be appropriate. I think with the CMGC and doing away with the large courtroom, Cootney County does not need the largest courtroom in the state of Idaho. And I'm thinking doing a little bit more rearranging there, that will get closer to what we need to do.
So we're looking at 3B, which is at current.
Bill, and I favor 4B and not a penny over 17 million.
Well, we can always do, we can pick whatever number we want and then we're just going to.
Yeah, we can always come down, Bill. It's going up that gets a little more difficult.
Government never seems to come down. It always goes up. I don't think, I don't think we've planned well enough at this point about who's going where to make these kind of hard money decisions.
So what are you suggesting, that we not make a decision today?
That's correct.
Leslie?
Well, Sean can say what that means.
Sean, you want to jump in?
If you don't want to make a decision today, then that's your right to not make a decision. This has been floating out there for about six years now. You can push it down the road and push it down the road, but it's costing, it's probably already cost three or four million dollars more than it would have if we could have done something five or six years ago.
Five or six years ago.
Construction costs, they keep rising. And even if there's a small recession, they're not going to go down, they're just going to stay the same. The problem is, without a number, and I'm not trying to pressure anybody to make that decision, but we've been going at this now since November, when we picked LCA, and we can't do anything, we being me and the architects, until there's a dollar, a budget is set. Is everything else, I can't even go get the CMGC without the budget, and then who's going to go in the building? Because when we go to get the CMGC, I have to be able to put specific stuff in that wording for them to be able to.
For everybody's benefit, what's CMGC?
Construction manager general contractor, which we used at the jail expansion. And basically, for those of you that don't know what it is, they, we bring them on board as early as possible so that they, and hopefully, we pick one that has a team that does nothing but work with the architects during design, and they start cutting the fluff and stuff out.
Okay. So let's go, okay, so I'm willing to entertain a motion at an $18 million cap.
Okay. With the fact that.
Thank you, Sean. You're welcome.
Minimum, public defender and maybe two small and one medium courtrooms, we can discuss that later. But public defender definitely needs to be there, and the courtrooms definitely need to be there, then we can negotiate down the road what else gets built out.
Right.
So yeah, I move that only for going-forward purposes, not locking the BOCC into any financial commitment. $18 million building, which includes public defender, prosecutor, courtrooms, and adult misdemeanor probation, potentially Board of County Commissioners.
Bill, do you want to second?
I do not want to second that.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion is passed. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Sean. Appreciate it. Just real quick, because we need to move on, the annex, have you guys looked at that yet? Or are you in the process of?
No, we, all of our meetings so far have just been spent trying to get this dialed in. So I can take Cory over there.
Okay, good.
They can look at it overhead.
Okay.
Yeah. They can do a Google Earth or Google map of it.
Okay.
And do we want to direct Sean to start the CMGC process?
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
Back to your point earlier, you know, we dilly-dally, well, we didn't dilly-dally, but going back years, okay.
Yeah, it's not a dilly-dally thing. It's just, it's been kicked down the road for a long time and it unfortunately landed in your lap.
Absolutely.
So I'll get with Ken and we'll start writing up something for the CMGC.
Thank you.
Ken, Russ, Ben, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks so much, guys. Appreciate it. Nice job, by the way. Very nice job, especially summarizing it as you did in the summary. Really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number two, the Marine Pole Building location. Leslie and is this our Lieutenant Higgins?
Cory Trapp, I guess we got a lot of people here to speak to that. So essentially, where the Sheriff's Department and Office of Emergency Management has agreed is to put the Marine Building on the property of where the Armory or the OEM sits.
Got it.
So the thing that I wanted to make sure in my mind is actually how much is going to cost us apart from the actual building? Because it's in the Hayden ACI, we've already made an agreement with putting OEM there and not spending the hundreds of thousands of dollars to hook up the sewer. So I'm not sure if maybe, Dave, did you see this? So, there you go.
Commissioners, I saw this just a few minutes ago. It brings two things to mind. First of all, talking to Pat Brayden and Stephen Kiergert, the agreement we have with OEM allows us to do the division of land, and that gets us out from underneath the ACI. So there are no more requirements. We can put anything the building code allows on this property.
Oh, fantastic.
Especially given what Sean just told me, which is such a de minimis building, that, it's a small building, that, and, so I know it won't have to be sprinkled. All it needs is a building permit, and it's not going to be watered.
Okay.
So it can't possibly affect the ACI.
That is, that answers my question.
Okay. That was easy.
Thanks.
What else do we need to do with this?
So it's not an action item, but that's okay. We can just say, bring it forth to a business meeting.
Business meeting.
What I'll do is I'll, I have the contract already signed by Cory and it's already gone through legal, so I'll put it on for next Tuesday, and then I'll ask the board to give permission to use the piece of property at the same time.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think so.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Item three, Fairgrounds Future Activities. Thanks, guys. Stay dry. Okay, so last week, I spoke with our Executive Director of the Fairgrounds, Alexia Jordan, and Alexia was wondering if there was a possibility of resuming some of their activities and bookings. And we discussed it, and I said, you know, check with Panhandle Health and let's bring it forward to our status review, excuse me, status update, so that maybe there are ways on a measured basis she can continue and obviously not just provide something for the community, but bring in the additional revenue. So Alexia, do you want to jump in here?
Sure. Mostly what I wanted to just visit with you guys about and get your thoughts is that currently, under Rebound Idaho Stage Two, which we've been really diligent at following these guidelines throughout this pandemic, we are unable to have any indoor or outdoor gatherings of more than 10 people. This obviously puts our business to pretty much a halt. However, if you look at the stages of Rebound Idaho, if you get time and you get to go to their website, you can go into specific business protocols for openings. And you can see restaurants, breweries, nightclubs, indoor theaters, gyms, all sorts of variations of business. However, event centers are not included anywhere in this. So I think we still fall under that blanket, 10 people. But looking around, I feel, and I feel we proved ourselves through last summer, that we can host safe events socially distanced with all the necessary protocols in place and get back to some sort of business again. We certainly have promoters out there wanting to do, willing to work within whatever guidelines are put forth to make it safe and acceptable. And, you know, we'll continue to work closely with Panhandle Health, but obviously, we would need your guys' blessing before we would proceed through anything else.
So Panhandle Health is willing to go forward with a plan to help you.
Open up, so to speak?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, that's a question.
No, Panhandle Health is willing to sit down with me and we can hash out what those details might look like if we can get back to business. But since we're not listed as one of those business exceptions, we, like I said, still fall under that blanket guideline. So if you guys are willing to say you're interested in it, then I can sit down with Panhandle Health and discuss a little further.
So I am, because technically, you would almost be like a restaurant for what, 90% of what you guys do? It's banquets, right? Or maybe that's too high of a number, but a large percentage is banquets. And if restaurants are being allowed to operate under certain conditions, I don't see why you couldn't.
If banquets are retail businesses, so that would include, you know, boat shows, RV shows, things like that. And like I said, these promoters are really excited to have the opportunity. If they have to limit a building that has a capacity of 1,500 to 50 people, they're willing to do that, just so we can get back to some business.
Bill, thoughts?
I think it's a very good idea that Alexia sit down with Panhandle Health. I just think that makes all kinds of sense, and then bring it back to us and let's talk about it some more. But they need to get open. They need to get open.
I think you have your direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're fine per the board. Go ahead and meet with Panhandle Health, see what you can work out, and let's go from there. How's that?
Sounds great. Thank you all very much.
You're very welcome. Final item, pending item status review.
I'm just looking through here, and I have nothing on any of my items. We just did the LCA January 12 meeting, and I don't see anything else that needs to be addressed today.
Okay. I don't think so either, unless, Nancy, do you have anything?
I would be.
You're good as well, Bill?
Yes, I am.
Nancy, did you want to comment on the audio?
We're still illegal.
Still illegal, okay. And I guess that's it for today. Public comment? Hearing none. Okay. Time is 11:48. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.